Be our official this evening for the planning commission in place of Joey Houston.
Yes, he's our city attorney. Just so everybody can be orderly in this meeting. For participants from the public side, if you can mute yourself and turn your video off. And then when you are speaking, it just kind of keeps a focus on our commissioners. And then when you are speaking, we'll give you the, if you would like to speak, you'd have that chance when we announce it. Then you can unmute yourself and turn on your video if you want to, but it's always appreciated. So with that, if we see that we have a quorum, we can, we can start the meeting. I did start recording.
Great. We do not have Commissioner Steinle tonight. He said to recuse himself because he's in proximity of this project. So he will not be joining us. And I do not see Commissioner Bodnar nor Commissioner Merrick on the call. Or on the virtual, Steve, am I correct?
Let me go down the list. I know Commissioner Bodnar should be joining us. I haven't heard anything about Commissioner Merrick. But I, I, yeah, I believe you're correct. We should, one, two, three. I mean, we do have a quorum. If you want to start the meeting.
Sure. Why don't we start the meeting? So I'll call the, oh, there's, there she is. Let me give her a chance to connect. Okay, we call the April 7th planning commission meeting to order right now. Do you want to establish a quorum, Steve?
Sure, I'll do a roll call here. As noted, Commissioner Steinle is absent. Commissioner Roche.
Here.
Commissioner Mensinger.
Sorry, here.
Commissioner Ahi.
Here.
Commissioner Bodnar.
Here.
And Chair Doran.
Sure, here.
And Commissioner Merrick.
Chance.
And absent.
Did we start recording before we indicated the reason why Steinle is not here?
Yes, it's been recording, yes.
I'm going to log out for a minute. I'll be back and I'm going to re-log in.
Okay. Well, I will then just ask for, for public comment from, from, for items that are not on the agenda for tonight. So if there's anybody on the line that would like to make a comment on something that we are not hearing and won't be making decisions on tonight. Please raise your hand in the reaction section. So interim planning services manager can unmute you. We see Peter Mills' hand raised.
Chair Doran, how much time would you like to give to public commenters?
Um, three minutes.
Okay, give me one sec here. Sorry, something just happened with my screen here. Okay, um, okay, thank you very much. So Peter Mills, you have three minutes if you want to unmute yourself.
Okay, how was that, Steve?
We can hear you.
Great. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Mills. I live on Solana Drive in Los Altos on the dead end, end of the street that is south of Almond Avenue. I addressed this group yesterday, but I wanted to call your attention to the number of letters and photographs that were sent to the planning commission that were part of the agenda packet at the meeting with the DRC on April 6. There are quite a few concerned citizens who'd like the city to incorporate important conditions into the objective standards for implementing SB 9. We all live on narrow dead end streets with houses only on one side of the street. There are about five or six of these streets in Los Altos, Solana Drive, Solana Drive, Autumn Lane, Winchester Lane, Robles Ranch, a number of others. And these narrow streets do not have room for parking on both sides of the street and still allow safe transit for fire and ambulance emergency vehicles. If lots with back fences along our streets decide to add living units under ADU rules or SB 9 rules, they should be required to access those living units on the street where the existing houses have access and not through the back fences. Because if they come through the back fence, there'll be a huge amount of parking on those streets and it will create impossible access and dangerous crowded conditions for delivery trucks, garbage trucks, mail trucks, construction vehicles, and emergency vehicles. So I would invite any of the planning commission to give me a call and join me on my street or one of the others. And we can walk the street in probably 15 minutes and you can see the issues that we're dealing with and that we're concerned about. Again, my name is Peter Mills, M I double L S. My address, my email address is Peter, excuse me, P B M S V. That's Papa Bravo Mike Sierra Victor at iCloud dot com. And my phone number is six five oh three oh two two five one three. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. See Diana Leong.
Are we talk about the project plan on the four?
No. So if you would like to talk about 4350 El Camino Real, there will be another public comment period for that. So this is just.
So I can wait.
Yes, this is just public comments for items not on the agenda. So if anybody else, if anybody else has a public comment that's not on the agenda, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself and we'll give you three minutes. I don't see any other hands raised and I don't hear anybody.
Great. Then let's move on. Let's move on to the consent calendar for the planning commission minutes for March the 17th. Are there any additions or changes? Yes, Commissioner Badner?
Yeah, so I don't, I think at the last meeting, I had, I was recused from the subject from the earlier time period. And I joined at like quarter past, but I, no one could see me. I mean, I was there, but I wasn't, it wasn't clear to everyone that I was there. So it shows that I joined like after all of the speakers. And in fact, I heard the entirety of the Denardi project from the planning staff report to the applicant and all the speakers. So that entering meeting time is incorrect. So, because it's reflected now, it looks like I entered after this, all the speaker. So if that could just be corrected.
Yep.
Okay, so, sorry. So you joined before item number what?
So the, the first item on the agenda, the, the meeting started like 15 minutes later. And then you, I think there was a break and then our meeting started and I was there for that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, don't hear any, then let's make a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll move to approve the minutes without change.
Second.
Second, second by Maryus. Okay.
I can do a roll call. Commissioner Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bodnar. Vice Chair Mensinger. And Chair Doran.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Great. Okay, well, let's move on to, we had continued to date certain this next item for public hearing for 19 dash D dash zero one, 19 dash U P zero one and 19 S D zero one. Gregory and Angela Galatola for 4350 El Camino Real, which is a multiple family design review, conditional use permit and tentative subdivision map for new multi-family development with a five-story building with 47 condominium units at the El Camino Real with two levels of underground parking. It includes seven affordable units with four moderate income units and three very low income units. And a density bonus with development incentives to allow for increased building height and a reduced parking aisle width. Included is a mitigated negative declaration with mitigation monitoring and reporting and compliance with CECL. And I guess I'm going, I'm going to turn this over to our project planner for the city of Los Altos.
Thank you, Commission. I have a short presentation that I'd like to share with you to just give you a, an overview of the project and what we've done so far. I'm sharing my screen. Can you, can you see my screen? All right. Um, I'm going to find my way into this. There it is. Good evening, Commission. Thank you for your time and we're going to jump into today's agenda. We've got the city's team tonight. We've got environmental consultants who worked on the MND initial study, mitigated negative declaration document. We've got in the audience, the applicant and the project sponsor who will be presenting after me. And we also have transportation consultant and city attorney's office present here to help answer questions that the planning commission might have. The project existing condition is located at the corner of El Camino Real and Los Altos, Los Altos Avenue. It's a point six six acre lot, which is currently occupied by an active and serving gasoline service station, service parking. It also includes a 1466 square feet convenience market and a repair shop. The pumps, the pump islands for the fueling are covered by canopies as you can see in the images to your right. Oops, there you go. The proposal in front of us today is a new multi-family residential development. It brings to the city 47 for sale condominium units, which is, and the building is proposed to be 53.85 feet tall. It's a five-story structure, two levels of underground parking space. The common open space is in the rear of this proposal. The project applicant is proposing seven affordable units. They're seeking 88% density bonus along with two concessions. The 47 units contain one, two and three bedroom unit distributions in, as you can see in the table to your right. Majority of the units are two bedrooms and the, the size of the units vary from, for the one bedrooms, five eight two to seven seventy four and goes all the way up to 1,00675 square feet. The parcel itself is zoned commercial tariff fare and the general plan designation is tariff fare commercial. Any multiple, any multi-family residential proposal is in the CT zone is, can be approved only as a conditional use. And so the, the approvals and the discretionary permits that the applicant is seeking is for a design review, a conditional use permit and a tentative map as, as listed in the description in your agenda packet tonight. A brief background of the project, this project came to the city in December of 2018. It is not an SB 330 project because of the date in which it was submitted. The project came to the planning commission for a study session in October 2018. It was approved by the complete street commission. It was recommended approval by the complete street commission in October 2019. And the city council has worked with the applicant in, in detail and has approved a story poll exemption in January of 2021. What you see in front of you is the site plan showing the L-shaped configuration of the building itself. El Camino Real to the front and, and then Los Altos Avenue to the left. And the, and the open to sky courtyard is at the rear tucked away at the back. These are some 3D renderings of the, of the proposal that we have received. And I just want to share that the materials used and the materials proposed for this project are plaster, composite wood siding, glass, stone finished materials, cotton steel, metal and wood sun shaped structures on the ground floor. The, 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 the project itself, the way it is presented and it is with us tonight, it does not conform to all the objective standards of the city. And I'd like to go through that in detail, but I just want to share some renderings that we had received from the applicant. I am going to allow, the, the architect will talk more about the design after my, my presentation. So we will be diving into those details later on. The development standards in the CT zone, I, what you see in front of you is an overview of what the standards, the required standards are and what the project actually proposes. At the outset, you can clearly tell that the requested density does not conform to the objective standards of, of the current zone. The, the project is required to dedicate 15% of the base units to below market rate housing. The project provides 28% or seven units to BMR housing. And in turn, they are requesting for an optional density bonus, which they are not entitled to by right. I would just want to share that prior to bringing this project to the elected officials, staff has on multiple occasions informed the applicant via email and letters about the inconsistencies of the project proposal. And the project hasn't been revised to address inconsistencies or inconsistencies in the zoning code or the development standards. The project also seeks two concessions. This is the height, overall height increase, the standard that is approved for the CT zone is not more than 45 feet. They are seeking 53.8 feet. And they are also seeking parking aisle width reductions from the recommend at the required 26 feet to a 24 feet distance. I want to focus on the density bonus of the project as it's presented to us. The applicant's density bonus letter says that the project provides the additional affordable housing units over the minimum city requirement. And their perspective is that the number of overall project units is necessary to reduce the risk and provide a safety net because of the very high cost of land and cost of construction. And even those, those high costs are trending even higher over time. And because of the uncertainty of the housing market is what they, they have cited as reasons for them to, you know, to actually apply and request for the additional 22, 22 units. Although the applicant has advised that the increased density bonus is necessary because of these risks due to cost of land, they have not substantiated this assertion. And moreover, the applicant is not identifying any significant community benefit for the project that might actually justify this increased discretionary bonus. The project, because they, they dedicate 12% of their below market rate housing units to very low income housing, they qualify for a density bonus of 38.75%. However, they are requesting for an 88% density bonus because they don't meet the, the objective standards and it exceeds the allowed density. It is not entitled to the requested 88% density bonus by right. Moreover, there are significant inconsistencies with how the below market rate units are distributed in the, in that, in the category itself. As you can see, there are no, there are no affordable units on the fifth floor. And there are no three bedroom units available in the BMR mix. Although the project applicant is, is, is providing more than the required number of units. There is, this is inconsistent with the Los Altos zoning code for the affordable housing. There are significant discrepancies also in, in, in terms of the size of the BMR units versus the size of the units in the overall project in general. And this does not comply with the city's affordable housing requirement in that the, the city's requirement is that the units shall be dispersed throughout the project. It shall not be significantly distinguished by size, design, construction or materials. But the fact that the current proposal, the unit type and size and the distribution is not equitable. It is not consistent with the city's affordable housing policies. Under these circumstances, the staff is recommending denial of the additional granted, denial of the additional discretionary 88% density bonus. Just to wrap up this section of the, the, the project itself, that it does not conform to the objective standards that are part of the CD district and then that inclusionary housing obligations for unit distribution. There is another section of the discretionary permit categories and findings that the council has to make if they were to approve the project. And there are the design, as part of that, the design review, conditional use permit and tentative map permit. The details of these findings are listed in your agenda report tonight, but I just want to give you an overview of what we, we, the staff is, has observed so far. The current proposal as it stands is taller by an entire floor. There is no, the vertical and horizontal articulation of this project proposal can be further detailed. There are no architectural elements that have been used to break down the, the large mass and visual appeal of, of the, this tall structure. Although the landscape has been designed well, they could have additional amenities to, that can be used for active and passive open spaces, particularly, you know, for families that might include children. For the conditional use permit, there are, there is a specific finding that is required that the project needs to meet all the inclusionary housing ordinance and all the requirement of the zoning code. And this project does not meet those standards. For the subdivision permit, the, the staff finds that the project remains inconsistent with the housing element goals and policies and that the, it does not meet the required diversity and size of the units and that the affordable units are not equitable and generally smaller than the market rate units in the project. The project is requesting for two concessions as we spoke earlier in the objectives and standard matrix. Since the project dedicates 12% of the affordable units to very low income, they are entitled for two concessions or incentives. And these two words are interchangeable. It means the same. The first one is the height, the maximum allowable height in the CT zone is 45 feet. They are proposing an eight and a half, 8.85 feet increase, which is an on menu concession for the Los Altos zoning code. If approved, then this project might avail and can be approved for this concession. Again, with the parking aisle reduction, the applicant is, is requesting for a reduced parking aisle while our current standards are requiring them to meet 26 feet. They are providing 24 feet. Again, these two concessions, they, if the project is approved and if it is going forward, this doesn't impact the project negatively. They are meeting the, the, the parking ratios under the density borders calculations. And they are meeting the parking space standard sizes of nine feet by 18 feet. Both of these are conforming to the Los Altos zoning code. In terms of the environmental review, a notice of intent to adopt an initial study mitigated negative declaration has been circulated. We did receive two comment letters addressing the MND, but the comment letters did not raise any significant new information in, that would warrant a new circulation period as such. And we have our environmental consultants with us for us, if you, if you have any questions to that effect. Story polls, the project does not conform to the modified, required modified story poll installation as approved by the city council. There were, there were specific conditions that were required to be met as part of the resolution 2021 04. As you can see on your, on your screens and the, those requirements have not been met. Generally speaking, with this very quick, brief overview of what the project, you know, the project framework is. And also every detail in the staff report, the, it is clear that the project does not comply with the city's inclusionary housing requirement. It exceeds density and it doesn't meet the city's design policies and objectives. And this is why the staff is recommending the denial of the proposed project. And I would pass the mic on to the applicant or I would, I mean, I'm willing to take questions, whichever the, whichever the chair seems.
Sorry, Chair, if I could jump in for a second. First of all, we, we need to take questions from, from the commission to staff. Go and open the hearing. But also, I just want to make clear that the story poll exception is not within the purview of this commission. That's within the jurisdiction of the city council. That's not before you and it's not on the agenda tonight. So as you frame your discussion, focus on the merits of the project, please.
Okay, great. I'd like to bring back and, and ask the planning commissioners if they have questions with staff. I don't see anybody raising, oh, yeah, sure, but Christian Badner. Unmute yourself, Roni. Sorry.
The density bonus percentage, I, I feel like I have heard pretty high numbers along El Camino in the past. And not recalling that we had this lower formula that we had people abide by. So I'm trying to understand what's, what has been, what, what, we've had now several projects along El Camino. What are the comparable density bonus percentages, if you know them, for those projects? There was a period, I remember, we started asking for that as a percentage and the ceiling kept moving.
Yeah, this is Steve Golden, interim planning services manager. That's some information that we could potentially research, but I don't believe we have that for tonight. I guess as a matter of reviewing this project, I would just look at the objective standards before you. And not that another project sets precedence, but we're looking specifically at our objective standards. But we could get you that information if, if you want a follow-up.
Just to chime in, until about a year or two ago, I forget when it changed. The, the maximum density bonus was 35% under state law unless you were 100% affordable project. Like you recently heard about 330 distal, that's entitled to a much larger density bonus because it is fully affordable. There, there is a provision in the density bonus ordinance that was in effect when this project was applied to that recently got changed, that was just sort of, I think inadvertently carried over from state law that, that allows without any sort of standards in place, the decision makers to approve a higher density. And so this falls under that version of the density bonus ordinance. It's certainly within the commission and the council's purview to allow it, but you're not required to. And in reviewing this project and looking at how much. how much smaller the affordable units were from the other units and and the lack of any community benefit staff does not recommend that, but it's within your purview to do that.
Okay, the the other question is trying trying to understand the changes. So this is not informed by SB three thirty. But if rejected, could the applicant pull their application, refile it under SB thirty and three thirty? Would there be significant differences in the type of information we would see in a staff report?
The rules for SB three thirty and the Housing Accountability Act do require in order to benefit from the Housing Accountability Act, for example, you do have to propose a project that is consistent with the city's objective standards. So whether the project were applied for now fresh again or or, you know, at the time that it was applied for, it it doesn't apply with the applicable zoning, so you do have discretion to deny. Does that answer your question or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if there's this process to leapfrog the city by going this other route. Are we like, is it better? I'll just leave it. That's the question is.
You know, whether they refiled now or not, they would still have to comply with objective standards in order to take advantage of of the protections of the Housing Accountability Act. Certainly, this may be related to your question, certainly if the applicant were willing to make some changes to the project and and come back before you without reapplying. That would be an option for you to consider too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any excuse me, any excuse me, any other wish or have questions for staff? Doesn't look like it. Okay, well, this time, why don't we have the architect provide us with their presentation, please? And I think I'm not sure who's speaking. Roger, could you let us know, please?
I think it I've been told it is Sidle Architects and I saw Alex.
I see Alex Sidle, Sidle, yeah.
Angie is also here. Angie also had a presentation. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm the applicant and I was going to present for the first five minutes and then Alex Sidle will take over for the remaining five minutes.
Okay, is that Angie who we see on our screen? Great. Would you state your name for us for the record? Yeah, you're muted. There you go.
Good evening. Should I start my presentation? I have I have five minutes.
Sure, go ahead.
And then my architect will will be handling the last five minutes of the presentation. I want to say good evening. We are pleased to be here tonight. It's been a long road. We've been at this since two thousand eighteen. My name is Angie Galatolo. My husband and I have been a business have been business owners in Los Altos since nineteen eighty-five. We currently own and operate three gas stations in Los Altos. I work for Compass, a real estate firm, and been ranked as a top real estate professional in our community. We have raised our three children in the Los Altos School District and have been longtime residents for over thirty-three years. We have a deep commitment and exceptional knowledge of the community. After much consideration, we made the difficult decision to retire this location. We plan on operating our two remaining gas stations in Los Altos well into the future. Like any proud citizen of Los Altos, we would like to see our corner, one of the city's gateways, developed in a way that's representative of our beautiful city. We are proposing a five-story, forty-seven-unit condominium development. The project location provides the most effective transition in density and height from the intensive El Camino corridor to the nearby low low-density single-family district. Our proposal goes from a five-story condominium unit to Peninsula Real three-story condominium unit to the Peninsula Real two-story townhome and then to the lowest density and height in the single-family district.
Sorry, Angie, are you trying to present something? Because we don't see if your screenshot, we don't see any screenshot.
Well, I'm not, I I submitted that to Rada. So Rada should have.
We're just going off of what you're talking.
Okay, so she should have my presentation?
You would need to tell us if you want to want somebody to screen share that for you and if you want it to be screen shared, then you would have to tell us when you're moving to the next slide so we can move that along for you.
Okay, is Rada ready? I I had submitted that. And I submitted also our architect's presentation as well.
Yes, I'm received. I'm in receipt of both and I am going to screen share in a moment. I'm sorry, I I misunderstood. I just thought we had the presentation for us to just, you know, review and you were going to present, but here we are.
And I'm pausing the time now just to be clear. So when you want to move to the next slide, Angie, if you can just let Rada know so she can follow.
All right, perfect.
And sorry.
We should be, that's all right. We should be in the third slide right now.
Tell me if this is the one, Angie, and I can move to the third slide.
I know that is our architect's presentation. Okay, and okay, give me a second. Thank you for your patience. Give me a minute while this downloads. Rod, I think it'll be easier for us to start from the beginning.
Chair, it's in your discretion, but we might want to start over the time just in fairness.
Angie, tell me if this is the one and then I can.
Yes, so that's that's a slide one and you know, you can leave it there and we'll since I only have five minutes, I had to contract the presentation, so I'm gonna do my little intro and then we'll hit the slides. So you can go on to the next slide. And I can start over and then we can we can continue from there.
Okay.
Okay, so here I go again, and thank you for that opportunity. Again, I want to say good evening and we are pleased to be here tonight and it's been a long road. We've been at this since two thousand nineteen. My name is Angie Galatolo. My husband and I have been in business and have been business owners in Los Altos since nineteen eighty-five. We currently own and operate three gas stations in Los Altos. I work for Compass, a real estate firm, and been ranked as a top real estate professional in our community. We have raised our three children in the Los Altos School District and been longtime residents for over thirty-three years. We have a deep commitment and exceptional knowledge of the community. And after much consideration, we made the difficult decision to retire this location. We plan on operating our two remaining gas stations in Los Altos well into the future. Like any proud citizen of Los Altos, we would like to see our corner, one of the city's gateways, developed in a way that's representative of our beautiful city. We are proposing a five-story, forty-seven-unit condominium development. The project location provides the most effective transition in density and height from the intensive El Camino corridor to the nearby low-density, single-family district. Our proposal goes from a five-story condominium to Peninsula Real's three-story condominium unit to Peninsula's Real two-story townhome to the lowest density and height in the single-family district. The city's general plan and zoning goals encourage and require maximum densities to achieve housing goals as its main strategy along El Camino Real. As you know, we are in a housing crisis. If you go on to the third slide, that would be great. The general plan highlights El Camino Real as one of the few areas to intensify without jeopardizing the city's small-town character. There are taller buildings in immediate vicinity range from three to five stories. Next slide, please. Our proposed density is consistent with recent approved housing projects along El Camino Real and Los Altos. We are requesting an eighty-eight percent density bonus. Other projects, to answer Ronan's question, have received an eighty-seven and an eighty-six density bonus respectively. We provided a large open space courtyard, two times their requirement. We have generous setbacks and then our project exceeds the required seven and a half set side yard setbacks. And we are currently at seven and three quarters. Our height incentive minimized by two feet lower than allowed and four feet lower than two similar projects. Our density is consistent with similar projects on El Camino Real compatible with the character of the area and helps meet the community housing. And our affordable housing is high-quality with more smaller, intrinsically affordable market rate units and extra BMR housing units meeting the community's need. Our location is perfect for this project. It has an ideal transition from higher density within the El Camino corridor to single-family to the south. And that has limited impacts to city character. Next slide, please. Our on-menu height incentive minimized by two feet effectively allows our nine units, nine units at our upper floor. Next slide, please. You should be on seven. One more, one more. Yes, right there. We are providing seven BMR units and forty market rate units largely meeting community for smaller starter homes and moved-down households and three additional BMR units over city requirements. Next, please. As you know, Los Altos is in a high a housing crisis. The average sale price of a single-family home is four point six million to date. We're very short and very low in inventory, few development opportunities, increasing mandates by state, and very few residents can afford to remain, not even children or grandchildren can live here. The affordable unit goal for twenty twenty was three hundred and eighty. Only thirty-two units were permitted, short by three hundred and forty-eight units. Next slide, please. And I'd just like to point out a few corrections. One more slide. Sorry about that. There's an error in the table that was provided. Just a few corrections. One, the side yard setback says that we do not meet the standard, which we do, we have exceeded it. And our density per acre is actually seventy-one point two, not seventy-five density units per acre, which is similar to other approved five-story projects. Next slide, please. So this concludes my portion of the presentation. Next, our architect, Alex Sidle. We I thank you. And then we will also like our five-minute rebuttal to respond to any questions or comments. Thank you. Alex is next.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Alex, go right ahead.
And Chair Doran, and there's four, I restarted the clock and there's approximately four minutes left, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Great, thanks.
And would you like us to share the the presentation or would you like to share your own?
This is Michael. Yeah, go ahead, Al. Michael. Michael is going to do our presentation. Thank you.
And I would prefer to share my screen so I can control the slides.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
And when you're ready, I'll start the timer.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Angie and commissioners. This first slide shows the proposed project in relation to other projects in the vicinity, such as the existing five-story multifamily project directly across El Camino Real, where my cursor is, and the three-story existing multifamily project called Peninsula Real, directly adjacent to the project in the south and the east. Additionally, there is a three-story existing lodging project across Los Altos Avenue and a senior housing project directly south of that. This next slide is the conceptual landscape plan showing the generous setbacks with planting and proposed street trees along El Camino Real and Los Altos Avenue. In addition, it shows the open space courtyard with the screening planting along the perimeter. And it also contains the amenities for the residents. This next slide is simply the ground floor plan. I'd like to point out the main pedestrian entry. And it also shows the general layout and logic of the units of the project. This next slide is the fifth-floor building plan. What is being displayed in green are the setbacks at the fifth-floor level. Additionally, the majority of these setbacks are actually decks to the units. This shows that the massing of the building actually reduces as the height of the building increases. This section drawing shows the neighborhood height transition from the single-family R1 zoning on the left across the CT zoning, the buffer zone of the two-story and three-story condo projects or Peninsula Real up to the proposed project, which is along El Camino Real here. So it it shows the transition and how we're reacting to that. These are the building elevations in context, showing the massing transition between the proposed building and Peninsula Real adjacent to it and the building across Los Altos Avenue. Additionally, it shows the vertical building rhythm in thirds, like in modules of thirds. This left-hand one-third module closest to Peninsula Real shows shares a likeness of material quality in that they share light plasters, wood grains, and a stone base. And my the next rendering shows the corner module at El Camino Real in Los Altos, where one can see the Corten steel and gray stone form the anchoring corner of this gateway site. It also shows that the fifth-floor setbacks up here are less bulky and in addition, the the bulkiness is reduced by the use of softer material. The next slide is a view, a rendered view from Los Altos Avenue that was showed previously, but it also shows the likeness and material transitions to Peninsula Real. This is a view of the of the courtyard. It's a rendered view of the courtyard showing the screening, planting trees along the the perimeter of the courtyard. This next view is a context montage with our proposed project inserted into a photograph of the existing condition, similar to what I discussed prior. This next sheet shows the material palette, showing many different high-quality building materials, a couple of stones, different plasters, the Corten, the composition wood siding. the composition wood siding, along with different architectural metals and glass guardrails. And then finally, these are images of the proposed tree palette that would be along El Camino Real at the sidewalk planter up against the building and then along the courtyard at the back of the project. So that's my timer. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask members of the public who are on the line who wish to speak on this. And it looks like we have several people on the line tonight. So I'm going to limit to two minutes.
Sorry.
I'm sure.
Can we get questions first?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I was going to do questions. Yeah, absolutely. Questions of the applicant? Sure.
Susan, do you want to go first?
You can go ahead. I'll follow up to you.
Okay. I had a few, actually. So the Equitone stone siding on the entryway, I looked up the color, and it seems more of like a beige. But on the rendering, it looks like a dark gray. I was just wanting to clarify what color that's supposed to be. If the architect could maybe.
Yeah, we were envisioning a gray-colored stone.
Okay, so that is. Okay. And then my next question, the garage ramp. You have two individual garage doors, one going in, one going out. And one of them doesn't seem wide enough. I was just curious, you know, if, why the decision was to not make it kind of one opening? Is there a specific reason why one is kind of pushed back? It just looked odd to me.
Well, they're two different planes. One is 10 foot, one is eight foot six, as you noted. Perhaps Alex, if he's on the line, could provide some more clarity to that question.
Sure. Hi, happy to jump in, Michael. So the two garage openings are slightly out of plane. And we think each of the openings are adequate for one-way traffic. Certainly something we could review, but in our experience, they're both adequately sized.
Okay, so wasn't a, it wasn't, it was kind of a, just a preference thing? It wasn't like there was a need to do that?
No, no. And it's certainly something that, you know, could be subject to adjustment if needed.
Okay. And then the, sorry, the last question I had was the building that's facing the fourth, the neighboring complex on those sides. There's a bedroom that is directly facing those units. And the windows, when you look at the floor plans, the windows are in the closets of those bedrooms. And then the other two windows don't seem like they're large enough for egress purposes. So I'm just wondering if maybe someone could explain the closet windows? And then also, which one is the egress window?
So I'll run with that in reverse order. The, there are no egress windows required in this building because it's a five-story building, so it'll be type-three construction. So, and I'm working off memory now. It sounds like there's, there's some windows that face Peninsula Real that are intended to be recessed, that are bedroom windows. So we pulled them back further away from Peninsula Real. And then there's some other windows that are tall and kind of horizontal that you can't look at Peninsula Real. So basically, the idea of what we're trying to do there is totally minimize the people from the interior of our project looking at Peninsula Real. I can't speak to the closet issue right now because I'm not looking at the plan. So if there's a glitch in that, we'll certainly fix it. But I'm pretty sure it can be fixed if there is a glitch there.
Okay. That was all I had.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Mensinger, you have some questions?
Yeah, I do. My first question is for the applicant. You mentioned in your presentation several times that the density bonus of 80-plus percent is consistent with other projects that were approved on El Camino and Los Altos. The piece that's missing from that is, what was the allowed density bonus under the calculations for those buildings? Was it your, same as you, where it was in the 30s and they went up to 80? Or was it in the 50s and they went up to 80? Or can you give me that information?
Yeah, so it was the previous objective that the city had adopted, which was 35 maximum. So currently, we're under 38.75%. The other projects, the other two projects that were 87, 86 respectively, they were at the 35% density bonus, state bonus.
So there, one could say then they're comparable in terms of the increase they got in the density bonus over the calculation to your project?
Yes.
And what projects are this?
That is, hold on one second, was 48.98 and 46.56.
El Camino?
Yeah, yes. My other question has to do with the distribution of the affordable housing units. Are you open to making changes? For example, doing a three-bedroom unit as affordable housing to making the other affordable housing units comparable to the market-rate units?
We could, you know, we've discussed the distribution with staff and in the past, when we first selected these units. And our fifth floor was our recovery for the construction and for the additional three bedrooms that we've been offering, the three, sorry, the three BMRs. And so that, that portion of the project helps pay for the additional three BMRs that we've been offering.
So is that a no?
It's something that we would explore.
Okay. And I was not part of the planning commission when you were here before. But I'm a little surprised, and I'm fairly new to the commission. So take that, as I say this, that given that staff went back to you several times saying, "You don't meet the objective standards," and I realize you applied before those were in place, "you don't meet other things that you would continue on with this project without making those changes, which would make it much easier for us to look unfavorable."
That's a good question. From what I understand, staff sent me the inconsistency letter. I was the lucky recipient for this inconsistency letter. They hadn't distributed that in previous projects. And so if they had, they would be following, falling under the same inconsistency as this project. So that was the first.
Not how you compare to others. Why in your case did you make the decision not to do that? Not to respond to the inconsistencies?
Well, we did respond to the inconsistency because it is, it's not an objective, it's not an objective standard by the city. It's a, it's a, it's a standard that is just under the discretionary of the city council. And so what we have been doing in this project is looking at the previous projects and looking at the economics. And unfortunately, our economics are completely different from the other projects. So we had to request such a density bonus in order to make this project viable.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Eric, could I jump in and make one clarification?
Sure.
Okay. When we say the project doesn't comply with objective standards, I don't mean to, we don't mean to refer to the newly adopted objective design standards. Objective standard refers to any kind of standard, whether it's zoning, density, subdivision, design, et cetera. And so it's, it's the density that we're referring to. And that is an objective standard. It's quantile, it's unobjective.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I appreciate that.
I have a question. I noted there that there's no mechanical equipment shown on the plan. And since there are several units, what type of, you know, HVAC system, is it a split system? Where are you going to put the compressors? And how is this going to integrate into the project, given that it's an open rooftop area?
Yeah, I can answer that. This is Alex. It is, it would be typically a split system, and there'd be mechanical condensers on the rooftop. I guess we didn't note that that was a requirement of the submission, but that's how it would be handled.
Okay. And then I just want to be sure we're clear. The risk-safety net is the fifth floor of market-rate units. That's what you're calling your risk-safety net?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. That's all the questions I had. May Russ or Richard, Rony, any questions?
No.
Okay. Seeing there's no more questions brought to the applicant.
Actually, can I, I'm really struggling with this density bonus situation, where two years ago, every project that went through was in this vein. And we passed standards that I'm struggling to understand actually contract. Are we saying that the standards that we passed now result in, in the future, less housing than, I mean, and less density bonuses that we would be allowed? And only if we consider it under the prior to SB 330, can we have discretion to allow them to have what other projects two years ago, when we, when we were, when it was dire, but less dire than it is now, we would allow? And, and I'm really.
I honestly don't know what.
Did we, did we close a loophole that we, that, or did somebody think that this was a loophole? And we closed it, and now?
I don't know what happened two years ago. I don't, I'm not familiar with those projects. It wasn't here, I can't speak to them. But the standard, the density standard has been the same, as far as I know. And the density bonus that's allowed under state law has actually increased. So if the commission and if the council were willing to approve projects that more than the density bonus they were entitled to in the past, that's fine. That's within your discretion to do again. But you're not required to do that. And especially given the fact that this project puts, it takes all the smallest units and makes them the density bonus units, the affordable units. And it doesn't disperse them throughout the building. That's inconsistent with the city's inclusionary standards. And so that's why staff isn't recommending that you grant the higher density. But it is in your discretion. And I'm not aware of anything having changed that, that would have allowed the higher density bonus in the past. I assume that those were granted under discretionary density bonus as well.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. What triggered the different? Because changing the diversity mix is a simple solution. And is that the piece that would get staff to do what they have done in the past, which is approve projects with density bonuses of up to and above 80%?
Again, I can't speak to what was done in the past. And I feel like I'd have to be able to, to fully answer your question. This project doesn't meet with the standards, and therefore, it doesn't have to be approved. You can recommend approval anyhow. Staff's primary concern is that it's not really meeting our standards for affordable housing anyways. So there's no real, there's no real reason why staff would recommend to you that this project is special and should be entitled to a higher density bonus than it's otherwise allowed. But you're free to disagree with that and take a different approach to it.
I think, sorry, I think if I could just, I think it's a little bit confusing that staff had given us a project a couple of years ago where they kind of asked the commission if we would approve a higher density. And we had the choice to approve that higher one. And now staff is saying that the higher density isn't allowed. I think it's just a little bit confusing where that thinking kind of went from one side to the other side. So I don't know, at least for me. I don't know about the others, but I think that's, for me, it's a little bit confusing.
So.
I'm experiencing that too. I'm trying to, like, we've done five stories. We've done 80%. They've been on El Camino. They look like this project. That we've had, we've had times where developers have tried to always put the lowest income in the one bedrooms. And we've negotiated that in a different mix. So I'm just trying to understand the disparate treatment or approach here.
Can I jump in? I'm, I would be curious to know if it really is disparate treatment because it might also be that those other projects, and again, I wasn't on the planning commission, so I don't have the history you guys have, may have had a better mix of affordable housing, right? So we don't know that. I think there's, you've got to look at.
No one ever, I've never seen 38%. I mean, I'm not sure if they, if they had, I'd be interested in that. But then additional, 28% is being offered. Usually, it's like 15% was being offered. That's it.
The only point I'm trying to make is that it is a discretionary bonus. It's in your discretion.
I understand.
I can't speak to what, what reasons were behind staff's recommendation in the past. They would have been policy reasons, not legal reasons. And staff's recommendation this time is based on policy reasons, not legal reasons. You are perfectly entitled to obey those policy considerations differently than staff as you're not bound by staff's recommendation. That's the point I'm.
Understood.
Eric, can I ask a clarifying question? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I never?
I had a question.
And I'm sorry, Angie, you've had your chance to speak, unless there's a question.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
My question has to do with how you calculate the bonus allowed. It's based on the number of units, not on the square footage of those units? Is that correct?
The bonus is based upon the number of units, right? So within the state law itself, there are tables. And so each applicant is allowed, so they, there may be multiple bonuses they would technically qualify for. So they might have a certain amount of moderate that would qualify for a bonus and a certain amount of BLI that would count. But they can only take the bonus based on one.
But my question has to, and I think this was addressed in the staff report, that you could say, "We're going to have five below-market-rate units." Forget about the max, but five of them with an average square foot of 500 square feet. You would get the same bonus as five units if you had an average square foot of 1,500 square feet for this.
Under, under the density bonus law, that's correct. Then separately from that are the city's inclusionary requirements.
I got you. But that, I think it's hard to compare buildings because unless you get into the nuances of what the units were and the square footage of the total units, you're really not comparing comparable things necessarily. It'd be my point.
Right. Okay.
And just to, I have, in the meantime, looked at some of those projects that were mentioned. I would say, and we can, if, if there's desire for staff to come back with some of the other numbers for other projects, I would say that the mix of the number of BMR units and the type, the income categories are different for those projects. They did propose, and the city accepted, a higher number of low and very low units over moderate, where this project has a proposed four moderate and three low. The other projects, I don't, I looked at one, I looked at both of them. I believe they have double the number of moderate rate units as low and very low. So there's different, I think, because it's a discretion, it was a discretionary approval, and this one is as well. It's not an apples-to-apples density comparison. And as we already discussed, the unit distribution size of the units as well, so.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or staff? Okay, I see several people on the line. So we will open up for public comment. And Steve Golden, our interim planning services manager, will call on you. Would you please raise your hand if you wish to speak? And he'll put a two-minute timer up.
So just wait a minute or two. I see at least one hand. And bear with me as I get the timer up. And you said two minutes?
It looked like there were several speakers, so I was going to limit it to two minutes.
Okay. Well, we usually see more hands pop up.
How do you pop up a hand? There's no hand thing.
There, there is a little gesture button at the bottom of the screen.
A reaction button? If you see at the bottom of the screen?
Yeah, and we'll open up to public comment. If you don't see that at the end, we'll call the people. We do see hands, and then we'll open it up. So. So, yeah, and if you can, that's fine. A thumbs up, I can see that. So I'll call off names and if you can keep yourself muted until I call your name. We are going to start with, oh, sorry, let me get my timer up. Here we go. One more second. So we're going to start out with Terry Couture followed by Deanna Luong. So Terry, you have two minutes.
Sorry, it's Terry Couture. My unmute button moved. For those who need help, if you go to participants, that screen, there's the, the raised hand is on that screen. I know it's kind of confusing. Anyway, I'm Terry Couture, resident, longtime resident in Los Altos. I am on the Art Commission, but I'm not talking tonight as a member of the Art Commission. I'm talking as a longtime resident. We need housing in Los Altos. I think this is a nice project. It's on El Camino where we're trying to get as much as we can so we can protect the other residents that are nearby with their single family houses. There is a lot of lower income units in this complex and I hope that you can approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Terry. The next speaker I see is Deanna Luong, followed by Don Gardner, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Loon. I'm a homeowner resident and on El Camino 4388, which is just located to the project site. I have been living in the current place for over 10 years. Since I moved in, new residential buildings within our block, I keep on building without stop. Just the other side of my building on El Camino Real, a newly developed project by providing over 700 residential units. There are already over 700 residential units available on our block. The block that I live is getting more crowded and crowded with people and traffic. Traffic light timing is getting longer to adjust with more people across the street on El Camino Real. Also, this is already not easy to find car parking on Los Altos Avenue close to El Camino Real, especially on the trash collection day. Since there are abundance new residential units available, there's no reason to add another 47 unit as to solve the residential shortage issue in our area. In addition, this planning site is currently is a gas station. We're supposed to serve the local Los Altos Avenue residents. If this remove resident near the Los Altos Avenue, we need to go further place to pump gas. Committee should also consider by converting a commercial gas station to multiple unit residential building. Hazard chemical can be found during the construction on the project. Is it safe to the property? Up to 24 unit family are directly next to the project site with two level underground parking and five level 65 feet building construction. It will just create now noise, heavy dust and garbage that will seriously affect the neighborhood daily life. The project plan subsized Los Altos Avenue is a five level and each level has a three bedroom units, right? My unit is directly facing this building with only 16 feet apart from my window. My existing will fresh air, natural light will be totally impacted and blocked by this subsized building. Also, my privacy will seriously impact by facing this three bedroom unit family in the future. That is my concern. I hope the committee can, commission can review my, my concern and then have the, had the good comment to the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Don Gardner. And I don't see anybody after that, but we'll open up to public comments, not with people not having their hand raised. So Don Gardner, you have two minutes.
Okay. Well, first thing I want to mention is I noticed that the meeting that we had on March 17th had twice as many participants as today. And so I'm wondering if this postponement might have lost a lot of potential people who might have wanted to make comments. My comment has to deal more with the fact that this is such a tall building. And I think it's pretty obvious from the presentation that that's the major feature or however you want to put it about this building, because that was pretty much everything they discussed. And it is kind of disconcerting that it's, it's being put in front of some three story buildings that were built in the not too distant past. And when they built those three story buildings, there was an attempt to try to build also on this property, but they didn't want to do it at the time. And now we've got this proposal for a five story building. I actually live five buildings away from this building and the, this building is so tall that it'll actually, the, the windows will actually look right into my son's bedroom on the second floor of our house. So it's, it's really quite disconcerting. And I kind of halfway wonder if the people that are trying to build this are proposing a five story building because they think they're going to get a four story building out of it as a compromise, when there really should be a three story building there because that's what the rest of the neighborhood around there is. And it's just, to me, it's just such a huge tall skyscraper compared to the surrounding buildings. And I really hope this commission takes that into consideration and tries to get the builders to build what really should be there. And that is a three story building. Other than that, I guess that's obviously the main problem with this project is they're trying to maximize their profits and try to take advantage of everything that's going on. And oh yeah, there is a housing shortage. And oh yeah, they're going to cash in by taking advantage of that right now. And I think that with the new virtual environment and so forth, the housing may change around. But I, I just think it's, it's an opportunistic project. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Appreciate it.
I now see Anne Paulson with her hand raised. Anne, you have two minutes.
Uh, yeah, hi. So, um, I'm hearing two objections, which I understand about this building. One is the density and the other is the, the applicants are not following our rules about distribution of the, of the affordable units, the below market units. And the applicants should follow the rules about the below markets. But it seems to me that if you can get the applicant to agree to fix that and make the, and move the units around so that they're comparable to, the, the below market are comparable to the other ones, they should be allowed to have the same density that you've already granted 48, 56 El Camino and 48, 98 El Camino. I don't see why you should give them less than you've been given these two other recent projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I now see Cindy. You have two minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Cindy and I'm a Los Altos high school student and I've been living on 4388 El Camino Real for most of my life. And I've seen the video of the flyover of the future building of 4350 El Camino Real, and I've noticed many concerning problems. And I, of course, there'll be like economical benefits, but the benefits will always come with problems. And one of the issues when I saw it was like the environmental standpoint. And I see that the trees that surround the building would be very compacted and would have no room for growth. But before worrying about like those issues, we should worry about like the building process and how it affects the environment, but also the residents that live around the area. So I seen an article that was published and it was talking about like construction sectors that was like contributing to like many of our pollutions and, and the, and these like were, they were like 23% of air pollution, 40% of drinking water and 50% of landfill waste. And these numbers are like very alarming, but these aren't the only issues, but also affect the biodiversity in the area. And with these like construction sites, there will be a lot of noise and light pollution. And it heavily impacted wildlife by disrupting their natural day cycle. But not only the animals, but the residents in the area will always, will also be heavily impacted because the construction industry will account for like 38% of the carbon dioxide like emissions. So when being exposed to like these carbon dioxide can like have a variety of like health effects. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
I do not see any other speakers at this time with their hands raised. But if anybody wants to unmute themselves and we can give you two minutes to speak. If you could just tell us your name first, that'd be helpful. I don't hear anybody at the moment and I don't see any other hands raised. Let me just scan down. I don't see any callers that would be unable to mute themselves.
Great. So Steve, at this point, does our applicant get an additional five minutes?
I would recommend, Chair, that you would close the public comment. Well, I guess the, the rebuttal would be part of the public comment, but at, then at that time you closed the public comment.
Sure. If the applicant would like to come back on and give any comments from anything that you heard tonight, you have five minutes to do so. Let's see. I guess I don't see or hear anything from the applicant.
Yes, I'm ready.
Are you there?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to the comments on pollution, environmental concerns. I, you know, there, that's a, that's a gas station. There's a lot of environmental and pollution that's associated with that. And as, and as a result, and as a real estate professional, the Peninsula Real condominiums, they don't perform in sales like an appreciation like the neighboring stack condominium projects. And therefore us eliminating and providing a beautiful building in that corner will do two things, two major concerns that the public had spoken. One, the environmental would be gone, the pollutants from, I can, I have a, a list of the pollutants that would be remediated from that location. And then two, the property values of that building would increase. So it would be a win-win situation for that corner and then also for the neighboring building.
Thank you. Thanks for your, thanks for your response. Sorry, there, since there's no other public comment, let me close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for our discussion. Let's see, commissioners, I can start with Richard. Any, any discussion from you on this project?
Well, clearly an objective standard is a big issue, big discussion. The density percentage comparing, maybe comparing apples with oranges. I think we do maybe in the future, better breakdown analysis of that. So we, we do have comparable data. Again, density bonus. The height of the building is a big concern and looking at the heights as on the blueprints, depending on where you're measuring it from, whether it's the, it's the roof base or the paravent or the top of the elevator. The building is, you know, we have a 45 foot requirement. And it, it's either eight to 18 feet above that, depending where you measured from. The size and bulk, okay, so I know Camino, no human scale there at all. Where's the, where's the guest parking? We talked about parking, the guest parking. There's no guest parking in the building. Where are they going to park? They're not going to park in El Camino because that's just been eliminated. They're not going to park on Los Altos Avenue. Well, they may, but there's very few spots with, particularly with the, the senior center across the street. I don't remember right. There's no parking right there. So where, where, where the guests going to park? You have 47 units. They're going to have some guests. They're going to park across the street near the liquor store. They're going to park further down in El Camino. It's a big concern. Not everybody's going to take the bus. You've got some, you've got 40 bicycle storage lockers. That's great. That's a good start. But big, big absence of parking there. The applicant says the high cost of construction was the, the basis for the density. And yet you've got aluminum frame windows. That's not exactly in vinyl frame. That's not exactly high quality. So I've got major concerns about the development. We certainly need housing. It certainly would be good to have some low income, some very low income. And but again, as has been pointed out by a whole bunch of people, the dispersment or is, is not throughout the building and those sizes are the smallest ones. The, I looked at the, the one bedrooms that are cramped, cramped in the corner next to the elevator, next to the stairs. Couple on the front of them, El Camino. So that's my two cents. I would have to vote no on the project as presently proposed. I think you've got, you can do some things, maybe knock a four off as the applicant said. Maybe that's the goal is maybe is to, instead of proposing a three story building, propose a five and maybe we'll knock off the, maybe you'll knock off one story, it'll be four, it'll be bigger than everybody else's and it'll fly. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to go next?
I'll, I'll go ahead and go next. I am troubled and I want, first off, let me thank staff. I think they did a very nice job of showing in detail why this project should not be approved in terms of it doesn't meet the objective standards in the city. I think that's important. I think one staff should be listened to. They're the experts here. I also think it's important that we follow the objective standards. It makes sense. And for that reason, I can't support this project as it's now presented. I, obviously, we want more housing. We want more affordable housing. But I really think that this just isn't a compelling project from that respect. And I think staff has identified all the reasons why and we've talked about it during the meeting. I'd be very open if they come back and have a different distribution of their below market rate housing that makes more sense, is more compelling and meets our standards. So I, I cannot approve as now it's contemplated.
Thank you.
I'll jump in.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you why I'm struggling is because I, I agree that we should have standards, but I also agree that we need to apply them equitably and that you can't decide to apply them strictly to one applicant and not to others. And so if you're, make, if you're taking the position that we aren't going to apply them strictly to others, then that should be consistent. Then, then the application, inconsistent application should be the consistent treatment. And so when I look at projects on El Camino, there are five stories. And if we were to go with the recommendation here and I, I'm, I'm struggling with the recommendation because it is inconsistent. That's my, that's my issue because I, I do like to go with the recommendation of staff. They tend to be consistent. And in this case, if we went with the recommendation and opposed it, then we would be saying to the applicant, bring us a four story building that instead of 47 condos has significantly less, maybe 30, and it would have even less low income. Don't bother with the density, you know, going above and beyond to the tune of almost 30%, which I just don't think we've seen. And I don't want that. I don't think they brought us a five story project hoping they'd get a four story project. They brought us a five story project hoping they'd get a five story project. And as the, like a planning commissioner, I want to approve a five story project and not make this take two years because in two years they'll come back with a six story project. And so we have buildings that look exactly like this along El Camino and, and Seidel Architects actually designed many of them. Like, in fact, they designed one of our biggest projects in Los Altos, the Colonades. And if you look at their website, you will see all the other projects along El Camino that look remarkably similar to this one. And so I think we should be consistent. I think we should apply our codes consistently. And in my mind, that is allowing this to go through. So my struggle is like, well, where's the whole design discussion? Like, I would have, we did that two years ago when we had, and I'm, I'm looking at those comments where we talked about like the corner design and the wood material and the location of extra parking and landscaping. And we're, we haven't gotten any of that feedback from, from staff because we're like, we're, we're, it's like existential. They're like not getting approved at the very first step. So we're not able. So I'm comfortable with approving a five story project with an 80% plus density. And the question I have is about this mix. And I feel like we just recently had a conversation. And I feel like we just recently had a conversation where we were saying, is the density mix that we have been suggesting accomplishing what we hope is providing more housing to more people? Or actually, is a mix that has more one bedrooms making very low income even more affordable to more people than a three-bedroom? So I don't know the answer there. I do think that in years past, I was of the opinion that, well, we want three bedrooms so that families can have access to it. But if that's not the demographic that actually needs it as much as the, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to that. But I am concerned that just like this, we, the combination that we've identified is the best. I'm questioning that. I'm willing to go with it and suggest to the applicant, change up your mix, even if that means you won't give 28%, you'll give 18%, because that is more important to the city in this state, in this. And my presumption is the city would then be behind that. So I certainly am where I'm coming from.
Thank you. I'd like to weigh in on that. I'm struggling similar to Commissioner Bodnar. The one thing that really bothered me is that it's talking about the fifth floor as the risk and the safety net, and we have to have these high-priced units to make it work. And take this with the spirit that's intended. It's not our issue to make your project pencil. So it's your property. You want to make it pencil. We understand that. And I'm trying to find the reasons to approve this, because I do agree. The El Camino is where the density is going to be. It's going to be five stories. You know, we tended to overlook the design elements that were brought up, the issues that were brought up in the past reports, which, you know, I think that we need to go back and revisit. So I'd like to revisit the mix of units in the building and not have the haves and the have-nots. And I think we need to look at, you know, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units for our low and moderate-income units, remix the building. We also need to answer the questions about, you know, visitor parking. We need to look at those design comments that the planning staff had previously put out. And then we can move it forward. And since this is on a CUP, we're going for a CUP tonight, we could move it forward and condition the project based on a number of these items, so the project wouldn't stall. So I am suggesting that as a part of how we move the project forward. But it's really hard for me as a commissioner, when someone says, I have to, you know, this is my expensive floor, and then I have all the have-nots below. So that's not the spirit of affordable housing, and that's kind of not the feel you want to have in your building. You don't want to have the have-nots on the first floor with one bedroom, you know, being in the elevator in the garage with the haves on the fifth floor. It's just not the spirit that the low-income and moderate housing was intended to be in dense housing. So let's see. Those are my comments.
Can I go next?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my comments are more design-focused, because I kind of assume that that the other issues wouldn't be kind of a big issue. But I'll start with the concessions. I think the density bonus in the 47 units is fine. You know, we've had other projects where we haven't even used the density number. I think our housing element is looking at removing that for the CT zone. So it seems kind of strange to require a density on this project. Height concession is fine. There's many projects that are much higher than this building. Access aisle, 24 feet is fine. As far as the distribution of units, I think, you know, I can assure you that council is going to have an opinion on that. So I think the Los Altos Affordable Housing Alliance or League of Women Voters, they usually have a good understanding of what units are the best. So I would probably get their advice on that. As far as the architecture, there's a couple of things that caught my eye. I think the corner condition is still not designed in the most effective way. It's very similar to what we saw a couple of years ago. I think that the entryway should really have more distinguishable features. You know, awnings over the lobby area, an address number, you know, a lobby entrance that's more visible, more landscaping in the front. It just, it doesn't seem like the other entries that we've seen in other projects before. Another thing is, and this might be personal, but the combination of the dark gray color and the size of the pattern of that siding, I think it just makes it look very heavy on that corner. I don't know if maybe it would benefit from having larger-sized panels for that portion or a lighter color. But again, that might be just my personal opinion. The driveway, as I said, I really think it should be modified. It kind of worried me that, you know, they're kind of jagged and that one is eight and a half wide. I think it could get very confusing for residents coming in and out of the garage. If there's a way to just make it one single entry, I think you should do that. Glass railings, we haven't really endorsed that on multifamily buildings. So I think you should really look at changing those. And then the areas that face the neighboring buildings, that four-story plaster element, it's on A3, A3.2. Those elements are concerning, because I think it just looks very dark and heavy. I don't know if there's a way to make a break where maybe the bottom is like limestone, and then it goes to plaster. Maybe having, you know, some type of band to break it up or a metal lattice of some sort, just something that breaks it up, because that continuous four-story element, I know staff was making a comment on that specifically. But yeah, I think, you know, there's a lot of aspects in the staff report that staff feels haven't been addressed. So I think that if we do recommend this, I think that we, like Shelley said, I think we have to condition it with specific things. But yeah, as far as the density and the height and those things, I mean, in my opinion, those are no brainers to pass them through, because we've done that in the past many, many times. So that's it.
Thank you, Mayrus. Well, we need to make a decision at this point of how to move forward with this. There's three motions to be made, though. There's the conditional use permit, the tentative map, and the negative declaration. Am I correct? Steve? We have three actions tonight.
You could make three different, I mean, discuss it and make motions of three different types. It just kind of depends on how you want to move this forward. If, or if there's reasons why you feel it necessary to continue it and just address those things to come back before making a formal recommendation to the city council.
I have a question about that.
And sorry, I think Eric.
Yeah, so I mean, in terms of whether there's different entitlements, and those entitlements, you know, with one motion or multiple motions, but the MND doesn't need, you don't need to recommend approval of that if you're going to vote for denial. But if you're going to vote for approval or conditioned approval, then you need to recommend approval of the MND as well.
And clarify for me, if we, because we've been having issues with this in the past, if we recommend conditioned approval, does that come back to us before it goes to council? Or does it go to council with those conditions being met?
The project goes to council. I mean, the applicant is, the application is the application. And your recommendation in that case would be to say to council, well, we could agree with the approval of the application with these conditions.
But if we ask tonight to condition this and bring it back to us, meeting those conditions, is that an action we can take?
Yes, you could request that staff and the applicant work together to make certain changes to the project, and that'd come back.
I would say if you're going to continue it and be asking the applicant to make certain changes, that you should probably ask the applicant if they're willing to look at those changes. If they're really unwilling to make any of those changes, then it doesn't, it doesn't really benefit by going away and coming back and having the same project. So then therefore, then the motion could be taken off the table, and then recommendation for denial or whatever.
So they could just due process, we could make our motion and not ask them to come back. In due process, they'd go to council and let it be hashed out at council with our recommendations.
If that's something you're comfortable with, yes.
Okay.
Where would I see, like, if staff assumed we were going to be okay with five stories and the density of 47 units, where are the recommendations that they're making to that building, to that design? Or is that not, that threshold question, because they didn't pass the threshold question, it wasn't, that exercise wasn't done?
So let me restate what I think I heard. So you're asking about if the commission didn't agree with the staff recommendation, a different option for this to move forward, why that was on the table?
I'm saying I want your, like, more specificity in the, in design recommendations along the lines of like what Mayrus was suggesting with respect to elements, as opposed to just saying, no, if it's five-story, just don't approve this because it's five stories and has, you know, an 88% density.
Sure. The project planner, Rada Higri, she might, I recall there was some discussion in the agenda report, but because there's objective standards that weren't being met, and that was the inconsistency with those standards, that was a cause for the recommendation of denial. However, we did identify some of those design elements, and those are more subjective in nature. And you certainly could condition the project or make recommendations for council approval with regards to that. But Rada can, if she has any specific answer with regards to where in the study.
Yes, thanks, Steve. So in this staff report, and I'm talking specifically in, the council needs to make design review findings. And I speak to those design review elements that I believe Mayrus also pointed out, that we need to make certain findings for architectural elements and defining and articulation. This is, I mean, let me remind you, this is before the adoption of the design control standards in the city. And so I have made staff review recommendations to that effect as to, if the applicant were willing and were to be, and the city council needs to make these findings if they have to approve it, they would have to definitely work and modify certain features of the project design and the way it is presented to us. And I just want to remind the commission that the previous project planner, Sean and Angie, and before I took on the project, has worked and has requested and made recommendations and sent in an innumerable number of letters requesting those details. But above all, it's the optional density and the inclusionary housing mix. That's the first outlier. And then it's followed by the elements of design that we need to actually make findings for. And so the staff report, page 14 through 17, have those reviews for those findings. And I specifically call out certain requirements for how they can, the design can be improved by breaking those large facades that Mayrus is talking about at the back and the amount of landscape and how they can articulate entrances, things like that.
Okay, so I want to clarify too. So this moves forward to the council. Those specific findings relative to design still have to be met when it goes to council?
Yes.
Okay. And we would call that out in our motion. And then I want to go ask the applicant, you know, is the applicant willing to make these revisions to the plan before we take our vote on this? I mean, do they have a willingness to make some of the concessions, especially when it comes to the design?
Can I ask a question that is on top of that?
Sure.
Do we need to first know if city council is going to agree with our five-story density bonus? Because if they make all these changes and they get there and they don't pass that threshold question, then it will have all been for naught. So do we need to send it to the city council to answer that question and send it back to us for the design review? That, I don't know. Is that an option?
Sorry, could you explain that again? I apologize.
I'm saying, if we send it forward to council and ask them to also make all the design changes, but council doesn't agree with our threshold question, like our threshold statement of like, we're okay with five stories and 88% density, they say, we're not okay with that anymore, then all the changes they would have made were pointless, right? They need to actually make it, make changes. They need to design a four-story building. So shouldn't they get that answer first? Is council going to agree that our objective standards continue to allow us to approve a project that's five stories and 88%?
Once it goes to council, the only time something would come back to planning commission is if it were an ordinance, and the ordinance were substantially changed by council from what you recommended. Other things don't come back to you from council.
I mean, could we say, send it back to us for the actual design review part?
I mean, there's nothing in the code that allows that, that we have to follow our processes that we have.
I'd also like to answer that by saying, there could be a lower density, given the same overall volume of space. There could be units that are merged together to create larger units, per se. And then you'd have a lower number of units, but it would be proposed in the same building. You could put different elements on that building to break up the massing or other design issues that you think should be addressed. So there's different, I think there's different elements to address here. But just reiterating, your recommendation, once it goes past this commission, then there is no requirement to come back to the planning commission, unless the council feels like they need your input again after they make some decision about it or determination to send it back to the commission.
Wait, excuse me. Don't we have the ability to continue this?
Absolutely. If you're not comfortable with making conditions and if there's design elements that you are, you want to see those before it goes to council, then you can ask the applicant to make those changes and bring it back to the commission for another review.
I guess I'll go back to your original question.
And there's no, sorry, just to, yeah, sorry to interrupt you. But again, because this is not an SB 330, there's no meeting limitation. So, but in the spirit of trying to move it along, we are not necessarily trying to, you know, just hold it off. But there's issues that we're trying to deal with.
Right. It's just complex, because there are standard issues we're dealing with and then design issues, and it's under conditional use. I still would like to ask the applicant about their willingness to work with us on these design changes and look at the unit mix before we decide to bring this back and take a vote. And Steve, do you have to unmute? I see Angie's hand is up.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Angie.
Okay, my video is not working. However, absolutely, we'd be willing to work with the unit mix. And I wanted to make, I want to identify. And I wanted to make a, I want to identify the, to correct two of the corrections in regards to parking. We have, we have exceeded the parking and then also the height. Once again, we are two feet lower than all the other buildings. So the guest parking, we and we have exceeded the parking according to state. And I think Alex could respond to how many parking spaces we have. And regarding the other comment on the height of our building, we are two feet lower than the other buildings have been approved. And yes, we will work with the distribution of the BMR units.
And and as well, my question was to redesign the facades of the building to meet the design standards that were set forth in, you know, pages fourteen through eighteen.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
And and we, yeah, yes.
Okay. So Steve, I I have to ask one more question. So if we condition this to meet those, it comes to back to the planning department to check that before it goes to council?
If you're conditioning, if you're recommending approval with certain conditions, then there would be an expectation that that before it goes to council, you know, they're going to submit the changes to staff and we'll review it and incorporate our review into the agenda report for city council. There might be items that are not addressed and we'll point those out to city council, whether the applicant looked at those items and didn't feel like they wanted to make those changes or otherwise, those would be reported to the council. But if you're recommending approval with conditions, it would not come back to you.
Yeah, I just have, I I hesitate a little because I think we've had some buildings where we've given some some really constructive input and then they move forward to council and input never got in and it makes us, it's just not a good process. So I'm trying to narrow it down that the input that we have that the staff has recommended actually gets on the drawings before it goes to council. And if it can't do that based on a conditional use discussion tonight, then I would be asking to bring it back. So I'm just, I'm trying to narrow, get you to say, yes, they'll all be looked at and bring it and and move forward. But I hear you saying that, well, if they still don't meet those, we still have to move it forward because of the process.
Yeah, there due process as far as, you know, the applicant can consider those those recommendations and incorporate them or staff will report out to the council those deficiencies.
I'm going to ask the commissioners, how do you feel about that? I mean, what what's your feeling on that? I want I want to just air it out right now.
I'm sorry, I'll go, I'll go first.
Please, no.
I guess it's it's just a, it puts me in kind of an uneasy situation because it's it's something where staff is not really comfortable with the density and the unit distribution and also the design. So I think if we push it to council, we're taking the risk that these two elements are not really approved, let's say. So there's the risk that council could, you know, not like what the changes are. There is, I I see some benefit of it coming back to us. But again, I I feel bad to make it come back because I I think that they do understand some of the comments that we've been giving, but it's a very, I don't know, I didn't think the the density and the height were going to be a a topic of discussion just because of the other examples.
Yeah, yeah. Ronita, Susan, or Richard, how do you feel about that?
Personally, I'd like it to come back to us because I think, as you pointed out, Shelley, that we have referred things on to the council and the changes weren't made. And I think I, my issue is not so much with the height, my issue is with the how the density bonus is being used and the composition of the units. And I think we should ask them to come back to us. And I'll obviously also incorporate the design elements. I'm sorry to keep kicking it down the road, but I think it's too big of a risk to send it on to council. We should do our jobs and do it well before we send it to them.
I think I I see a better opportunity for like progress if it comes back to us than if it goes to council with two kind of big issues, the density bonus and the and the mix and also other design issues. And so I would see if we could solve at least some, one, if we can, if we're going to get, we can figure out the density mix. And if we can make progress on the other one, then I I see it having more success. And I would be interested in in this period if if it's like a plea to the, to, because I know they listen, to the housing experts to suggest to us also what they think is the right mix based on our our actual needs. I really trust their expertise. And I'd be interested in that. And hopefully we can get, we can get that from those folks and maybe staff can reach out to them to ask them for that. Or if staff you know, wants to stick with our density mix, that's fine too. But I I'd be interested in that. And then in terms of the design elements, I imagine that a lot of it is locked in, but we've talked about landscaping, we've talked about visibility, signage, things that are actually not major fundamental like changes to their design. And so I would encourage them to entertain those.
Great. Thank you. Richard?
I can go along with it. What you said suggested that that it come back to us. I'm fully in agreement with that. We've got some big changes to make. I'm, I really question in the back of my mind whether they'll make them because this is not their first rodeo. The applicant's been here before and with, and it doesn't seem that they've made the changes that have been suggested in the past. But I'd sure like to see it. I'd sure like to see a nice, beautiful project on that corner with affordable units. Provide more housing for our, for, for people here. So, yeah, I go with making the changes and bring it back to us and let's get it done.
Sure, I I agree. I agree. I just don't want to have happen what's happened in the past where you send it forward. So I'm going to miss the gas station, just so you know, it's one, it's one of my favorite stops. But so let's, let's, let me figure out how to make a motion on this. Can I ask someone to state the motion? Should we just move to continue this based on the design comments that are in the staff report pages thirteen through, I think it's eighteen, thirteen through seventeen? And then looking at the unit mix of below market rate units as well as understanding the right mix from our housing experts and addressing the design elements, landscape, visibility, and signage. So we're, basically, we're continuing this and do we want to do it to a date certain? Give the applicant a date certain or just wait till they come back to us? Don't know.
I mean, I bet they would try to come back to us as quickly as feasible, but
Yeah.
leave it to them. We'll be here.
Yeah, we'll be here. So I I may, I move to continue application, I have to go to the very application for forty three fifty Al Camino Real with the changes that we have discussed. And I believe, Steve, you'll put that in the report, which have to do with design elements and then the unit mix.
Question. Was was your motion, did it include the diversity, the distribution of the units?
Yeah, yes, the distribution. And I'm not questioning the height of the building. I didn't not, I'm not, I was not putting that in my motion. Anybody else has any feedback?
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there a second for that motion?
I can't.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, the second was from, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want me to call, roll call? Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bodnar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Menzinger?
Yes.
And Chair Doran?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the applicant and their representatives and to staff for this. I know it's a difficult issue, but we will get this moving forward at some time. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Let's see. We are now at the point of looking at commissioners' reports and comments. And anybody attend any meetings, have any comments, or I'm going to add on to that, any future agenda items?
Do we want to talk about a future agenda item for the subcommittee with the DCR?
Yeah.
Just to chime in, under the Brown Act, if you want to add something to a future agenda, you're allowed to take an immediate vote without discussing the issue, but you can't really discuss the issue that you want to put on a future agenda.
Okay.
Just want to be clear.
Thank you.
In that case, I think we should maybe add it to a future agenda.
You're right, but we're going to add the design. Yeah, the meeting that the design review commission and the planning commission had yesterday, yesterday on SB nine and the subcommittees that will be looking to form. Okay.
For the, I guess for Commissioner Bodnar's benefit, since she wasn't there, does anybody want to just rehash real quick what what was decided?
I I would rather that we not go into discussing.
Oh, okay.
I actually got on at six tonight, completely the wrong day, right time, the wrong day. I I just didn't have it right, but I'll watch it.
Okay.
And then as far as potential, well, future agenda items, your meet, your second meeting of April is canceled. City Council canceled those meetings that week because of the Jewish holiday. And then that would take us into May. And I don't think we had any specific items on meetings in May, other than, just to remind you, there is a a request for a study session with city council on May twenty fourth. Oh, no, sorry.
No, April twenty sixth.
Sorry, you're right. I had that May date on my, on my brain because I was previous to the change. So, sorry, yeah, April twenty sixth and the corrected date is April twenty sixth. So hopefully you provide some feedback to the city clerk who's managing that. And and then that will take us into May. Hopefully this project will come back in the future, the one forty three fifty. And I don't believe we had any other specific items. There was a discussion, some recommendation for parking lifts, mechanical parking lifts. And just to report back, we are thinking about that as far as maybe late spring, early summer to potentially do some field visits in surrounding cities, but that's in the works.
Yep, absolutely. And I also, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sure. I I'm looking at the tentative meeting schedule that was set out by Steve on the first of April. And we have meetings noted on May fifth and May nineteenth. So, oh, there's not.
Sorry, trying to get to my mute button. Yeah, those are still scheduled, but I just don't have any specific items at the moment. I'm in our ten of agenda, but that doesn't mean that if there isn't any items, we'll we'll cancel them. If there are items, we'll be definitely meeting here.
Thank you, the clerk.
And at some point, we wanted to look at the application of modular, high rock, modular mid-rise and high-rise and understanding the design elements of those. And I talked to a few people in the industry who are willing to give us a, you know, tutorial and about, you know, what you can and can't do with those with articulation, et cetera, so we understand those a little better. Maybe I'm a little not understanding it, but just to bring it up, yeah. Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I was just curious if maybe Steve or or someone, has there been any discussion about having us go back to city hall for meetings? Or is that kind of still, I just was curious if there's a plan?
Why, you don't like how we look from there, or why?
There, there has been discussion. I believe the council is going to consider that in a May meeting. The, I just to report back, the council chambers has gone through some updates. And that seems to be coming to completion. So a little bit is pending that that final construction or cleanup of the construction over there. And so that might be a little bit dependent on that. And then also there, the council's decision about bringing commissions back together. There, I'll just say that there is discussion about a potential hybrid approach to allow some some input from from people in in this virtual sort of venue, but also having people meet in in the room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steve, isn't, my understanding is, once the governor takes away the COVID emergency order, then you would be required under the Brown Act to meet in person? Is that accurate?
I, I'm, I'm not, maybe Eric has heard more of the the legal requirements. I'm not certain with regards to that.
Again, I don't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't remember the the details of it right now, but we do have to sort of, again, be careful about, we're allowed to make short reports and ask questions of staff and get quick answers, but we can't spend too much time on a topic.
Okay. Well, seeing no other business, I just close the meeting. Adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you.
Good night.
Bye.